Good evening and welcome to the May 23rd, 2018 meeting of the Wareham School Committee. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and an audio recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the committee? Okay, so no one. We'll move on to good news. Does anyone have any good news they'd like to share? Go ahead, Mike.
I attended the Ford Drive for Your School event. That was, um, they always do a great job. I test drove a couple cars. Mr. Palladino thought I was gonna buy one. He wanted me to buy one. They just do such a great job. There's a little army of DECA people there, just, you know, doing a great job. I also attended the Addams Family play. That was great. They always do a great job and every one of them's different. That's what I like about it, just to do such a great job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Discover Wareham is out. There's copies over there if anyone would like them and you will find them across town. If you look on, next to the back page, you will see Wareham Public Schools. So, we have some publicity about what's going on in Wareham, so we're very happy about that. Next, the girls tennis team is one step closer to the state tournament and I believe they played tonight. I'm not sure how they did, so congratulations to the girls tennis team as well as all our spring sports teams. I would also like to commend the Key Club. It's run by Colonel Stanton at the high school. And yesterday or the day before in the rain, they were in onset cleaning up the police substation and they're doing a fabulous job. They do so many wonderful projects for our community that I would just like to acknowledge all their hard work. And finally, on June 7th, the First Annual Middle School Art Show and Concert. It's from 5:30 to 7 o'clock and I would invite everyone to see the wonderful talents that our students have at the middle school. Thank you.
So I just wanted to say I also attended the Drive One for Your School event and it was awesome as always. But what really stuck out to me that day was Wareham Ford. They do such an amazing job. They're so, they're so willing to help the school. They go above and beyond. It's been the two, same two gentlemen from Wareham Ford who've been there. This is the third time that they've done it since I've been around. And so it just reminds me that we have so many businesses that give back to the schools in this town, small businesses, big businesses. So I just wanted to say thank you to Wareham Ford and to all the businesses that helped to support the schools in a lot of different ways. And I also wanted to say in the last couple of weeks, there have been a lot of changes that have gone on in the schools. People will be in different places than they are. Next year, they'll be in a different place than they are this year. And so I just wanted to say a thank you to the staff, the teachers, to everyone, to, you know, to all the professionals. Their number one priority is our students and I just wanted to say a thank you to them because change isn't always easy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting from May 9th, 2018. Does anyone have any comments or changes with those minutes?
Just a couple. So I guess page seven, where we were discussing the reconfiguration toward the end there. It says, "Mr. Flaherty stated he saw savings with not as many assistant principals and now he is terribly disappointed." It was more than just the assistant principals. It was just that there was zero input slash vetting from the school committee that really had me upset. I'd like to have that reflected in the minutes.
Do you say what word exactly you want in there?
Sure. I guess savings. He said he saw savings but not as many. I guess stated that. I guess after assistant principals do period and do, and is, and now he, or comma, and zero input slash vetting from the school committee and he is terribly disappointed. And one other thing. It's under the mid-year evaluation update on goals, page six. It just says, "Mr. Flaherty asked if this document was going to be discussed. Now we're at another meeting." And I just want to reflect it in there that due to, you know, the short notice on receiving the progress report, at the meeting I thought it was like less than 48 hours. It was actually less than 24 hours before the meeting.
Somebody's gonna have to help me. I don't know what you want in there.
So after it says, "Now we're at another meeting," space due to short notice on receiving progress report, period.
Thank you. Okay, any other changes?
No, thank you.
Could I have a motion to accept the meetings, the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Next on the agenda is the Student Advisory Committee from the high school.
Before we turn it over to Lizzie, a couple things. Unfortunately or fortunately, tonight is senior night at the softball games, so we are missing one of our members and one of our other members could not get out of work for tonight. So, before I turn it over to Lizzie for her last official act as a member of the Student Advisory Council, I just want to thank her for her honesty, her hard work. She's brutally honest in my office and she call, as you'll probably hear in a few minutes, she'll call like she sees it. She is an awesome, awesome student, very involved. I mean, just, you know, start off with the fact she's the president of DECA. That in itself is almost a full-time job. But beyond that, she's involved, as you know, in athletics, soccer. She's on the Honorable, National Honor Society. She's a peer tutor. She was on the prom committee. We had an awesome prom this past weekend, by the way. And she's the treasurer for student government. She's received all kinds of awards for everything that she's been involved in. And I was really happy when I spoke to your mother and she told me that you were gonna do some type of management within the realm of business because she motivates people and I think she's gonna be an excellent leader in whatever capacity she serves after she graduates. So, Lizzie, thank you for the last two years for being a member of the Student Advisory Council. And I will turn it over to you for your last official duty as a member of the Student Advisory Council as she will be graduating in this year now. She has two more days of school.
I'm very excited for those two days to be over. So what am I doing? Just talking about what we're doing?
Tell them, let's keep them updated.
Okay, so let's see. We broke ground for the outdoor classroom within the last few weeks, so they started putting in, like, they started tearing up the concrete slab that was there and they're like putting in like a grass and that kind of stuff, things you'd like to see outside. We got new furniture in the library, which is really cool and really comfy and it's not gross like the old furniture was. What else did we get? That happened. We did have the Drive for Your School and we had the 39th Annual Auction for DECA within the last few weeks and both were very successful, even though we did give Mrs. Maurice a few heart attacks. The play happened, well, the musical, that was really good.
There's a lot going on the next few weeks, but that's pretty much.
We also lost our printer. That's what he meant by the brutal honesty. So, when I spoke with him about, he asked if I had any, like, student feedback on anything that was going on in the school. And I've heard multiple complaints about the lack of copier slash printer that is in the library at the moment. We did have, I spoke with Mr. Palladino and he confirmed that we did have nine printers and copiers available to students and staff throughout the high school. And they were taken to get new ones and we were only given four back. And they were, they had to be placed in the four most important spots out of those nine. And unfortunately, the library is not one of them. That library printer, students use to print out multiple papers for assignments, essays. I know all of the seniors have been living in the library this year trying to get all of their portfolios printed out since we do have full paper portfolios and not online ones. And many, many students have told me about the issues with having the printers not be there because a lot of kids do not have printers available to them at home and their only access is through their Chromebooks at school. And now that, after we had already gotten the wireless printer for Chromebooks to help the students, the printer got taken away.
So, obviously.
They were tired to get the wireless available for students, but I assured them that it would only be a month of inconvenience because we haven't assured that we received two printers that were allocated for Minnet. So unfortunately, we have to limp along a little bit, but in the long run, we'll have two printers from Minnet for us. One, obviously, the first one goes to the library. So very difficult decision to make in regards to where to put these copiers. I wasn't excited about it, but, you know, we will be in a better place. So I don't want the school committee to think this is gonna be an issue next year because it will not be an issue next year. I've already been assured that we'll have two copiers from, from Minnet when they close. If that doesn't come to fruition, we'll have to figure it out. But there's, it's tough because the high school kids do a lot of copying for scholarships and portfolios and things of that nature. So we will have that figured out. Unfortunately, it's tough to get it figured out on the fly and towards the end of the school year. But it is an issue and we will address it and make sure we're in a better place. But Lizzie certainly made sure I knew it was an issue. But it's, you know, the kids are coming down to my office and using the copier in the back area, as are a lot of teachers. So, you know, it's, we'll get through it. The sky's not falling. Anything else?
Seniors only have two days left of school.
Plus midterms. And if I can-
If they have any.
True.
Which I do not. So I have a week off.
That's because you aren't a student. The two projects that Lizzie brought up, I just want to reiterate, I know I've said it before, but the outdoor classroom was a donation from the class of 2017 and the refurbishing of the furniture in the library was from the Gateway Golf Tournament. So I can assure you, it's not that I have an account to do these kind of things. Without those donations, none of that would be possible. So we're very excited about the outdoor classroom and the fences going in next week. So unfortunately, Lizzie won't benefit from it, but she certainly helped us to get that going in the right direction and that'll be a nice little legacy that her and the Student Advisory Council will leave behind.
Does anyone have any questions? Well, thank you very much for your service on the advisory committee. Enjoy your last couple of weeks of high school.
I will. I graduate on June 8th, two weeks.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is the update on the Minnet Forest building project.
Yes. I had provided you with a letter that we had sent to MSBA on May 15th, just summarizing what the committee decided. If you remember, I shared with you the MSBA had asked for us to go back and look at a different grade level configuration. So we looked at pre-K to three, four to seven, and then the seven and eight option to see, is there anything in there that would be adjusted? The committee and the architects did some work to see if the change in grade level configuration would still match the educational program. And I did give you a copy of the educational program just for your information as this was the document submitted. The committee voted unanimously to stay with the pre-K through four enrollment design that has been submitted to MSBA. And we received an invitation from MSBA to come to Boston to meet with them on June 6th. At that point, we'll be presenting our overview for the proposed project. They then will meet on June 27th, I believe, and look to take a vote, which will keep us moving forward in the pipeline. So, we're moving along very nicely. We have a plan. We have a committee behind us. We will be meeting with Communications Group because now it's time to start informing the public of what direction we're heading, to ask them for support, to get behind them, but more importantly, to answer any questions that they may have. Because this is a very important milestone for the district and we want to make sure that everybody has as much information as they possibly need. So we'll be providing you feedback along the way, but at this point, we're at a very good juncture.
The only thing I would add to that is that the next meeting of the School Building Committee is Tuesday, May 29th at 5:30 in room 228 of the Multi Service Center. Does anyone have any questions?
Just despite this little bump, I mean, nothing's been delayed or anything, right? We're on track for everything?
We are. You know, and that was a lot of work with the architect and the committee kept pushing it forward.
And I think May 29th, is that the same night as the kindergarten ice cream thing?
No, that's Thursday.
Yeah, right. All right. I'll be there, actually.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the request to seek funding from Community Preservation Committee for the track.
I want to just take a minute to thank Mr. Gardner for really looking into this opportunity for our track. I'll take you back a little bit. Last year during the track, spring track season, I received a phone call from the head of officials asking me what's wrong with the track. And I said, "I don't know. I don't think there's anything wrong with the track." And he said, "Have you been out there lately?" I said, "I've been on the sidelines watching the track meets." And he said, "You've got holes all throughout the track." He said, "You can't run track meets very much longer in that facility." So I called Chris down and of course I went out and actually walked the track and took some pictures and realized that the track is in, it's in a tough state at this point in time. So I want to thank Chris for looking into the potential opportunity to possibly get some CPC funding to secure and stabilize the track from the condition it's currently in. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gardner. He serves as a teacher at the high school and also the track coach for the winter and spring.
Thank you, Mr. Palladino. Thank you for seeing me tonight. As Mr. Palladino said, I'm looking for CPC funds for a resurfacing of the track, but also some, adding some security to it as well to improve on existing fence that's there and also adding some more fence to, add some more security to the, to the track. As Mr. Palladino said, there are several places on the track where it goes from one side to the other, where there are breaks in the seams, where people could easily turn an ankle running. We've, as Mr. Palladino said, it's been two years now that we've had track officials say that it's almost to a point where we won't be able to have home meets at, on our surface, which would add to having our, all of our meets away and maybe even not be able to practice there at all. The amount of money I'm seeking at right now is $200,000, but I think it could be a lot less depending on the final quotes. Again, those are just based off some first quotes. I'm still waiting on a couple more that I'll be getting at the end of this week. There, the track is used year-round. The field hockey team obviously uses it in the fall, the field, but they also use the track in the winter and spring. The track teams obviously use it. And even in the winter, when there is snow and ice, we sometimes still use it and other people still use it as well. You can see footprints from people walking around the track. In the summer, anywhere from sunrise to sunset, there could be anywhere from 10 to 20 people on the track. As I was pulling in right now, there are over 10 people on the track right now. So it's something that's used by the community. It's used by other communities as we have big events there, like the Moving Wall last year and also Relay for Life, which is a, I think, four or five-town event now with the addition of Plymouth. So it's a, it's a track that's used quite a bit, not only by our community, but other communities as well. I think this would be a huge benefit for us.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Laurie, did you have a question? Oh, sorry, I thought you raised your-
I just want to say on behalf of students and parents, thank you for the effort that you've put in. Having a place where we can have home events and that brings pride to not just our students, but to our community is a big deal. And I know that this was a lot of extra work on your part and I appreciate all that you went through to look into this and for the support that you're giving, not just us, but to our whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just want to point out that you're here for approval from us, so then you can move forward in the process with the town.
Right. Be looking for, obviously, the approval from the Town Administrator, Board Selectmen, and then bringing the application to the CPC.
Okay. All right, so could I have a motion?
So moved.
Well, a motion to approve-
I make a motion to approve-
Approve our support for this project.
Our support. Good luck.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of handbooks for 2018, 2019. We're gonna go by school, so, okay.
I would invite elementary, Mrs. Chandler and Mrs. Siemens, to come down and present the changes in the elementary handbook.
So Mrs. Chandler and I are here to present the changes that we have for the elementary handbook. We didn't do a lot of changes, but the few that we did, we wanted to highlight for you. So obviously, there's some last-minute updates that we'll do once everything has been approved. But two of the big things that we did, we each do an elementary pledge every morning with our students over the intercom. So we wanted to make sure we added that into the handbook because that's a big part of our school culture. And the other piece that we added in, we included the memorandum of understanding with the Wareham Police Department. But also, we wanted to add back in the group categories for discipline. We had that years ago. We took it out when the law changed, but we wanted to add it back in for some clarity and to give us some examples of consequences that we can do. A lot of times, we'll get questions from families about consequences and we felt would be a lot more clearer if that was back in. So that's why we decided to add that there. If you have other specific questions, we'd be very happy to answer those for you.
Does anyone have any questions about the elementary handbook? Mike?
All right, so I don't, I don't have it up in front of me at the moment, but under those categories, I'm glad they're there. I was gonna ask, what was there before, but I guess there was nothing there before, right?
It was pretty generic. It was mainly just the law and then we used our interpretation. And it does have to be individual per student and progressive discipline, but we felt it was important to have a guideline there.
Yeah, I read it. I was thinking it really got progressively more, I mean, it's strict. But something that stuck out to me was like under weapons and stuff. One of them was bracelets, like they're not, if bracelets aren't allowed?
The weapons of, if it's a, bracelets have a weapons nature, not like a jewelry kind of a bracelet.
Okay. All right, so there's, they can wear bracelets. Nothing that'll hurt someone.
Yes, jewelry, yes.
And also, the second bullet here, we've got, "We're keeping the Minnet Forest name so they will see Minnet Forest that Wareham Middle School." What is that?
We're still calling ourselves the Minnet Forest School.
Okay.
And that would distinguish us between the Wareham Middle School.
Okay. But, but there is no, I mean, that's great for us and stuff, but DSE doesn't see it that way, right?
Yes, it does. We're keeping the school number.
So when they do MCAS, it's gonna be, it'll still show up under Minnet?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
A school within a school.
Okay, good. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a quick question. Is the handbook something you review yearly to check for?
Absolutely. And anytime there's any policy updates, we update those as well. And that's why on here, you'll see the bullying policy was updated.
And this year, Ms. Siemens and I went through it. We went through it with our administration team and then we went through it with school council and then got back together again. So we had a lot of feedback from various parties.
How many drafts would you say you went through?
Too many. We went through about four.
Yeah.
And we worked on a shared doc together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve, or do you have another question, Mike?
No.
A motion to approve the elementary handbook?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And next would be the middle school. Dr. Stedman and Mrs. Cote.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak to you this evening. We will echo many of the same sentiments as Minnet. So, the changes that were made for the 2018-19 middle school handbook, we've involved the school council and gotten their feedback. A lot of the changes are primarily associated with the changes that are being implemented in the building due to reconfiguration. Just some items I'd like you to be aware of in order to provide greater specificity around some consequences. On page 14, we've added excessive tardy information to be even more clear about our expectations around tardies. Right now, it's in Group A, so we wanted to be more specific on that. We added penalties for misuse of Chromebooks on page 38. And as we have been attempting to do over the past three years, really try to mirror the high school handbook. And so last year, Mr. Palladino mentioned some items that I blatantly stole from him. On page 41, added number 12 to Group B. Page 42, added six and seven to Group C. And that's just in order to mirrors the high school book. Ms. Cote, anything you'd like to add?
I think you did a good job, as Minnet did. We updated the policies, so.
Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? I actually have a question. So you say that you removed Thursday from days teachers are available for extra help.
I wanted to clarify that. Thank you. It should say, "We removed Tuesday from days teachers are available for extra help." So it will be Thursdays. Thank you.
So does that mean it's only one day a week now? It used to be two and now it's one?
All year we've had, all year we've had one day a week.
Oh, it just wasn't reflected.
This current year, it wasn't reflected in the handbook.
We really have left Tuesdays for parent-teacher conferences, which are booked every Tuesday.
Okay. So how long has that been the case, that you've had one day for extra help?
This year.
Just this past year? And has it worked out okay? Have you had students or parents say that they needed the other day?
We haven't because we have some internal intervention periods and, and things of, of that during the day. So really, we were nervous about just having the Thursday, but it seems to have worked out well this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to kind of mirror hers. Are, do you think students are using that time in the afternoon for extra help? Or is it really truly just being done, you know, through other interventions throughout the school day?
Oh, no. Thursdays are pretty booked here, so they're definitely using that time, yes. Anyone else?
It mentions, the word deans was removed where it mentioned. There'll be none?
At this time next year, we will not have a dean, no.
Like, no deans at all?
Not at the middle school, no.
Okay. All right. I was gonna ask about the Thursday. It says therapeutic learning center had, was changed. Just explain that.
We just, in the handbook, it said the adjustment program. We call it the therapeutic learning center, so we just took out the words adjustment program.
So to greater reflect exactly what happens in our school.
And the last one, updated bullying policy. Is that pretty much what was discussed earlier?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Could I have a motion to approve the middle school handbook as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now the high school. Mr. Palladino.
Okay, so the theme continues. Not a lot of changes. It's just some refinement. I'll just talk about the process a little bit. We do a lot of surveying in the school to get input, input from the students and from the staff and in regards to things they'd like to see changed. We also had a site-based decision-making team that spent approximately five hours going through the handbook and making formal recommendations to the staff, to the students. And obviously, we're here today to discuss some of those. So one thing that we removed, you know, lunches are free now. We were hesitant to move that last year because there was a little bit of boomeranging that went. We had it one year, didn't have it the next. But now, you know, for two years in a row, we'll have it, and we anticipate, according to the, the Director of Food Services, it'll be here for a while. So we felt comfortable removing that from page five. One of the things the students really wanted is to get rid of the IDs, and, and the staff was on board with that as well. So it was, it's very difficult. The, the technology was difficult. We were spending a lot of money on that. And the states after us about our discipline, and almost half of our discipline resulted in issues with students failing to wear IDs. So we felt like that would be a proactive move to reduce some of the discipline issues. Staff would obviously still be required to wear it, and students would have to wear it when using the lab during class time. So some of that will still stay in play. We updated the MCAS dates to reflect next year's dates. There's some language on work permits which needed to be adjusted. And then some wording for hiring, that was adjusted. Some new language that was, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this with the electronic media and communication devices. A lot of schools are allowing students to use their electronic devices during passing. And we spoke with quite a few of the schools that are, that are doing that to get some feedback. They've been doing it for some as many as, you know, a few years, some as recent as just this year. And they felt like it reduced the, the need to try and use your phone in the classroom to communicate with parents or whatever the communication that may be occurring in the classroom. So we, we're going to try this this year, with your permission, obviously, to allow for students to use it during passing. The one thing that I was adamant about was that we, they can't have two earbuds in their ear. There are important announcements that are made during passing, and God forbid there's ever an emergency. If you have two earbuds in the ear and music playing, you're not gonna hear anything. So that's one policy that we, that we're looking to enact, is that they can use the phones, but they can only have one earbud in the ear. It has to be shut off at all the times, obviously, with the exception of the cafeteria, which has been past practice for us. We've allowed students to use the electronics in the cafeteria, and that's, that's gone well. Some schools don't deal with this at all. I don't subscribe to that philosophy. I really think that cellphones have it, have its, their place. I don't think it's in the classroom when we're providing you a device to have one-on-one. You know, I think you've got the Chromebooks. You, you don't need your cellphones out at this point in time. We've, we've had a lot of requests for shadows, which, over the last couple of years. So we wanted to add the shadow day as part of the visitors' policy. We're really excited. We're up to about 14 shadows this year for students that are looking to come back to the high school. And the majority of those kids that shadow end up coming back, so that's, that's pretty exciting. We updated the policy on search and seizure, and as I think all schools in the district have done, we've added the memorandum of understanding regarding the school resource officer. So those are the changes from the high school. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Mary?
Just one on the cellphone use. Have you considered at all using it as a motivator for behavior in that kids that, you know, haven't had any discipline issues are, have the privilege of using the, the cell, their cellphone during the passings?
Well, they're gonna be allowed to use them during passings. That's part of the proposal. But in, in regards to, what comes to mind with that question is in the social-emotional room, there's a point-level system, and, and those students get rewards similar to that, where they would be allowed to use their phone if they reach a certain goal for that period of that day. So definitely, it can be used as a motivator, absolutely. But that's on a small scale.
I guess, yeah, so I guess my question would be, so if you have a student that, say, has been suspended for the day or two days, they come back and they can still use their cellphone, right?
Well, if there's a, if there's, if, if the reason for the suspension was improper use of the cellphone, which I would hope it didn't get to that level, but it could certainly get to that level. I've, I house three cellphones a day in my office as part of the reentry plan. So, you know, if, if we have to get that involved, we can. It's, it's kind of rare, but I've got three of them in my office every morning. And they pick them up at the end of the day.
Right.
And that was part of the reentry plan for the students that just, you know, it's, it's kind of, some kids, it's, it's like an addiction. They've always gotta be on it.
Right.
So we're trying to curve that.
Anyone else?
I like what you did here with the, the different color. Makes it, makes it a lot easier. I wish they were all like that.
Give credit to my secretary, Jen.
Yeah. Just the search and seizure policy, like what sort of updates were there?
So I believe it was in alignment with... Let me open that up for you. We just changed a couple of words. Reasonable cause versus probable cause, and number two, we just cleaned that up.
Okay.
There's just some, some, a few words that were just changed. Nothing, nothing major as far as that goes. And I believe it's based on the, making sure it's reflective of, of the policy, the district policy. Making sure it was aligned to that.
And the work permit section is, is pretty large. Is that an addition? Did you add that?
That was added, correct.
So what was the, the policy before?
Well, the policy's always been that they've had to go to the superintendent's office, but I believe we just added that down to the, down at the bottom.
So, so it's added to the...
To the existing policy.
It's added to the handbook, but the policy really hasn't changed?
No, correct.
Got it, okay.
Correct. The policy's been that way for as long as I can remember. They had to go to the superintendent's office and get the, and I believe that's aligned with the state.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to get a, a couple of things kind of cleared up. I had a couple of questions. You said you had a team that spent five hours?
Reviewing this whole document. And even that, sometimes...
How many people are on the team?
I believe there's five teachers from across all disciplines.
The English department as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just, as a, a parent, have, have a couple of concerns because I think there are still some, some concerns with some of the grammar as well as, you know, some of the words in here. And looking from the outside, when we're looking at the handbooks online, it's a representation of the quality of education as well as the professionalism, professionalism of the school. And while I like some of these changes, I do have a couple of questions on, on some of them still. I think we can do better. I'll, I'll be perfectly honest. I, you know, I, we've got some fabulous teachers. We actually have some fabulous students. And I think that, especially at the high school level, I, I think we could do a little bit better on our handbook. And I think it could be better linked to different spots on our webpage to make it a little bit easier for parents to find information.
Sure. No, I think it's great advice. I'll, we'll definitely take it into consideration.
I also had a, a question on the student identification cards.
Yes.
What was kind of, I guess, the, the rationale or the reasoning for not having the students wear those?
Well, they're still wearing them.
But they're not required to do so?
They are required currently to wear them. We'd like to take that away.
Because as, as I read it in here, the language was taken out. Student identification must be worn on breakaway lanyards. They must hang over each student's chest. Refusal to wear them will result in the following consequences.
Right, that's been taken. We, we're proposing to take that out of the handbook.
Why would we take that out of the handbook if it's still a requirement for them to wear them?
It's for next year. This handbook is for next year.
So next year, they're not required to wear them?
Correct.
Okay, that, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's my fault.
So I guess I'm trying to understand why they're not required to wear them next year.
Well, you know, again, Desi is asking us to be reflective in our discipline. Half of our discipline results in failure to wear IDs. You know, there's not a lot of schools that wear them. We tried it. I'm spending a lot of money on IDs, I'm having trouble with the system. And I'd like to use that money in the classroom, quite frankly. I, I think we could still have IDs in the classrooms for students that have to go out and use the lab or get a drink or go to their locker. But during passing, obviously, they wouldn't have them on. You know, we've got eighth graders coming in. There's gonna be an added cost to that. So it was just something that the students, through the Student Advisory Council, through surveys, and then the staff in just fighting this battle every single day to have students wear IDs. You know, we brought this on voluntarily as a pilot to try it out. You know, it's, there's, there's a lot of pros, but there's just as many cons to the policy, and we're the only school in the district that does this. So it's tough when, you know, you're constantly fighting every passing period, and, and the only thing they hear us say is something negative about getting your ID on. We'd like to take a pause for a year and, and kind of see how it goes.
I kind of give us kudos that we are the only one in the district to use them. As, as a parent, I was quite proud to know that we were doing that as a safety measure. With all the security concerns going on across the nation, this was one more measure that made me feel like my child was in a safe setting. It's impossible to know every student at your school. You can't, you know, there's just no way for the teachers to know every student. And I liked the idea of the badge because it was clearly, you could clearly see who did not belong. They did not have a badge on.
If they're all wearing them.
I'm sorry?
If they're all wearing them.
That's true, if they are wearing them. But if they're gonna be required to wear them for the lab or other things like that, you're still gonna run into the same problem with, you know, not having them and things like that.
On a much smaller scale. Right.
Just my opinion.
No, I, I, trust me. I'm the one that started the program. I, I hear you.
Well, no, I, I, I'm a big proponent of it. I, I, I hate to see it go, to be perfectly honest. That's just my opinion on the measure.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question? What was your intent when you started requiring them to wear the ID?
Yeah, thank you. My, my hope was that there would be so many different uses for these proximity, there's proximity, proximity cards in the IDs. And my hope was that, you know, we could use them in so many different areas, and eventually, that's how the kids get checked in. It, it just couldn't come to fruition for many reasons, some even beyond our control. And, you know, it became a, a situation that the only reason they were wearing them was for identification purposes. And again, it's costly, and it's the, again, the basis for half of our discipline is failure to wear IDs. So when I have a state saying that we have, you know, a rate that's X times higher than other schools in the area, and, and I'm trying to be reflective but looking at why do we have so many discipline issues, and then I, and we got great kids. So it's like, yeah, you know, this is something maybe we should take a year off and see how our, our data comes back on the discipline. And, and again, try and be reflective and, and see if it was worth it for a year.
So it wasn't a security measure? It wasn't something to do with school security?
Well, it, it, it wouldn't hurt, but I mean, this by no means is our only measure of security. You know, our, our goal was, again, to, to be able to monitor kids going in the nurse's office, to be able to monitor kids using the lab, frequency that they use those. To be able to get a lunch and just scan and go, and get a book in the library, scan and go, and eventually come into school and just scan and go. It, it just never, again, really came to fruition. And again, not, no, no one's fault. It just never matriculated.
Okay. Because to me, it sounds a little bit like, well, they won't follow that rule, so we're gonna get rid of that rule, like...
Well, again, this is feedback from students, Student Advisory Council, teachers, the handbook committee. You know, I, I mean, yeah, it's, 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 there's an issue. You know, there's a good percentage of kids that it's never an issue with.
Okay.
So I think it was the last school committee meeting that Dr. Shaverhood gave me my ID. And she wa, and she warned me big time that make sure I wear it or I'll, I'm gonna hear about it from the, the front, the front desk there. Like, don't get, don't lose it.
That's not, that's not gonna change, just to be clear. You still have to have it on if you come into the school and you're from the outside.
But just, I wasn't gonna say anything, but in this discussion, I just kind of thought about it. Now, I mean, regardless of whether or not they're required to use them, but at the, at the high school, all the kids riding the bus are gonna have IDs as well, right? So the high school is gonna have two IDs. So they, can they somehow combo that?
We can.
Yes. The bus pass, you know, we've been working to put, you can either, oh, I don't have mine on. You can get the little pouches, and you can put one in back of the other, so you could do that. The lanyard, you can clip them on both of them, but students will have to have the bus pass to get on the bus. Now, if they don't ride the bus, then there will be no bus pass, but they'll still have option for the ID.
What is the, the penalty for not having your?
There's, there's three steps in the handbook, and, you know, the first step, I believe, is a warning. Second step is the detention. Third step could be an in-school suspension, and it goes up from there.
How many students have received in-school suspension for not wearing their ID?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but...
Guess?
My, my guess is throughout the year. I'd hate to guess, but it's significant.
And one of the things that Mr. Palladino had remarked about, you know, the state looks at our data, and they come and, you know, they've said to us, "You have to put things in place to improve." So when, when we start breaking it down and looking at what are the reasons, it looks like we have a, a large population of students that are getting in trouble a, a lot when in essence, they don't have an ID on. So for that piece, it certainly would have a more accurate reflection.
I've been called at home by my son to grab my, grab his ID because he, he's gonna get killed if he doesn't have it, you know, so...
So I guess my question is, how, have you looked at other? Yeah, like other discipline, other ways to enforce the ID rule?
It's, you know, it's, it's a battle, and we, we've got three deans, and they're dealing with other issues. We've got two social-emotional rooms that occupy almost one dean every single period. So it's, it's, it's very difficult to, to deal with this. I'm not saying it's impossible. But, you know, we want to do things well, and, you know, this isn't, we're not doing a great job with this right now. It's, it's very tough to have the, the man or woman power to, to deal with it when, you know, you're dealing with a shorthanded situation to begin with.
I do understand why. I just...
I could put a dean on full-time, and they, and they would be dealing with that all, pretty much all morning long. We don't have that luxury.
So, so how about you tell them no cellphone use if you don't have your ID?
Great. I'd love to have someone on board to manage that. Great, love to have someone on board to manage that.
I just, a couple of follow-up questions on that. She asked you to give a guess and significant, can you?
I don't feel comfortable guessing without researching that. I mean, it would be, you'd be surprised.
Well, I guess I'm looking to kind of understand why, you know, we're saying that this is such an issue that we're going to do away with it. I kind of agree with our chair on that, you know, it's not working, so, you know, we're going to stop doing it. Part of the job in high school is to get them ready for the real world. I've recently toured three different colleges with my daughter. They can't get in and out of those buildings, they can't do anything. You hit it right on the head, that badge is your key to life. You scan it for your food, you scan it for your test, you scan it for everything and this is one of those, one of those milestones, one of those things that they need to be learning the responsibility for, just like doing their homework, just like reaching out to the coach themselves instead of having mom call coach when you're going to miss a practice. I don't think saying that they're not doing it and it's taking up too much of our time is the right answer in my book for this.
Right, and again, remember the philosophy behind it was that it would have multiple uses.
Right.
And right now, it doesn't and it's very difficult to make that happen.
What is missing to make those pieces happen?
Money.
So, they don't use their ID even for lunch?
Nope, they do not.
Well, on another subject having to do with the handbook, not the ID. As a school council member for many, many years, you and I have had many conversations about the handbook.
Yes.
So, if we, if we said, can we postpone the approval of the handbook and have it come back in a couple of weeks and just change the presentation?
It's, you know, one of, it's, one of the things we like to do is to have it printed and ready. Would a few weeks affect that? Probably not, but I'm going to be honest with you, when you say presentation, can you be a little more specific?
It just, it jumps around a lot, it's just.
This is, this will not be done. This is a plan that we have for the summer to clean it up. It's currently a document so that we can get it to print. It's in a totally different format than I'd like it in. I spoke with Jen, my secretary, about trying to change the format and that's going to be a summer job that she's going to try and have, oh no, she is going to have done so we can, what happens now is when you add things, the whole formatting changes because of the system that's being used. So, we want to put it on more of a Google Doc type system where when things are added, it doesn't impact the formatting and that's what's happening now with, it's kind of an antiquated system that we have it in and it does, as things are added, they get put in different areas. So, one of her charges for the summer is going to be to get this, first of all, on a document that we can work with so when we add and delete things, it doesn't impact the formatting, which then impacts the table of contacts. So, there's a lot that has to happen and I'm going to be quite honest with you, there's no way humanly possible we could have that done by July 1. It's just, we are out straight at the high school right now.
Well, because I have to agree with Rebecca that this is a document that's on our website, it's a representation of our high school and I just, I said this, I know we've talked about this many times, I just think it could be better. I think that our presentation.
And I'd be glad, you know, to get that to you over the summer, but I believe our only meeting is in August and by then, you know, it would, you know, it would be cleaned up, there's no doubt about it, but we do need to have a working document for day one of school, so that's our.
So, then if we approve this today, then this will be the document that's printed and distributed?
Well, we can move things around, obviously, and make sure they're fitted appropriately and in the right order.
Okay.
I'd like to ask for this document to be approved today, however, what I would say is then the first meeting in August when we return, Mr. Palladino will present the final document to you in a different format. The reason why we would like it approved today is we need to get started on it and having last minute change in August would be very difficult to have this ready to go. So, the content, if you will approve it, then we will start the manipulation and the cleaning up of language, et cetera. So, I would ask for your consideration with that.
Can I just make one more request? So, the ID policy, can we revisit that?
It would have to be revisited before August, that's for sure, because it's, to get the equipment in place and to get the things that we needed fixed, fixed, it's going to, first of all.
No, I understand, no, what I meant is in a year.
I'm sorry?
I meant in a year, not before.
Oh, no, I anticipate, definitely. I'm not closing the door on this.
Okay.
But I need to get some things in order in our building in order to support this. I mean, I, there's a lot of things in regards to these IDs that need to be fixed and right now.
Okay, no, I understand, but I'd just like to, I don't, instead of just doing away with it and not bringing it back?
Sure.
To discuss.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I anticipate we'll have internal discussions before we have an external discussion here. We'll be revisiting it with the teachers, getting feedback from them, the students, school council, all of it.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
I can appreciate where you're coming from, we're towards the end of the school year and this is a crazy couple of weeks coming up with graduation and finals and two days left, I think she's already gone. But at the same token, I think we need to show pride in our work. We need to not approve things when they aren't up to a certain standard. We need to start saying that, you know, the bare minimum or mediocrity is okay. We are capable of such great things and I think it's time to put that line in the sand that, no, this, we can do better than this.
Sure, I mean, there's not a lot of changes from last year, but I agree, we can always do better.
Mike?
I'm moved to approve the content of the high school handbook.
Okay, is there a second? No second?
No second.
Okay.
So, what we will do is, this will come back to you before we adjourn for the summer, it will be cleaned up and we will make some adjustments. If you have any suggestions on what you would like to see, if you could send it to Mr. Palladino and copy me, we would be very grateful.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is the district handbook. The district handbook, you have the cover sheet and what it really does is it just reflects changes in policies and how we've updated them throughout. So, if you have any specific questions, I would be very happy to answer them for you.
No questions?
These reflect changes in policy that are different from last year?
Yes, policy adjustments. There were, yes, they might have had a word left out that needed to be added. For example, H, this shows what the school committee had voted on, how we select library materials, et cetera, et cetera. Because of moving mineet from mineet over to the middle school, then we updated if we have to close a building due to an emergency, where the mineet and the middle school would go, they would go to the high school and just making adjustments in this book, either with changes because of location or policy changes. And of course, the last one was just the addition of the calendar. So, I'd be very happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
So, most of these were just updates, but no new policy or policy changes?
These are updates to, from policy committee, yes, and approved by the school committee.
Policy committee that was approved previously?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's where I was trying, trying to understand that part of it, okay. So, this has already been through the school committee, policy committee and approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did not make any.
No, well, no, I was just, I wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
Yeah. So, I'd ask for your approval for the district handbook.
Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero?
Thank you very much. Acceptance of gifts. The first one, Mr. Palladino, the Wareham Veterans Association had proposed to place a new stone and plaque near the entrance of the field to commemorate the veterans' wall that was there last summer. So, I would ask for your approval to accept this gift.
Do I have a motion to accept? So moved. Second?
Just some discussion?
Sure.
Just, I think it's a great idea, I was really impressed when I saw it. I just wish that it was noted on the, on the agenda, but just so people knew about it, but that's okay.
Well, perhaps it could be reflected in the minutes, Michelle? The description of the gift?
Yeah, it will be.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero?
Next, I would recommend the acceptance of a donation from AT&amp;T, Your Cause Corporate Employee Giving the Program, four dollars to the Wareham High School. These funds will be used to purchase snacks during the MCAS testing. I would ask your approval.
Go ahead, someone else?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero?
Thank you. And I had handed out a super, on this superintendent's report, approval of bills and payrolls, they changed a little bit. We will reflect this on the minutes and as well as on our document on the website. Instead of reading them, I would ask that you approve all that are listed on the handout. But I can read them if you would like.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is school committee reports, are they ready? School committee reports? No? Okay, and finally, if there's any other business that wasn't anticipated? Go ahead.
I just wanted to note that, see, the snack shack's coming along pretty well. When should that be done?
I'm not really sure.
Oh. It's moving right along.
It is, it is, yes, it's great news, great news. Thank you.
Sure.
As this seems to be like the last on our agenda, a reminder that tonight is senior night, right across the parking lot at the high school softball game. They are having a fundraiser. If you get a chance, I know it'd be great, I know the team would really appreciate seeing, you know, some of our administration and some of the school committee there to celebrate our five seniors at the high school softball game and they're serving dinner.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.